Good evening. I am going to call to order the April 8th, 2024 School Committee Meeting. I'll just read this agenda item quickly. This meeting is being held in person and/or remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the Open Meeting Law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. We have Harbor Media recording, and we are recording on Zoom for purposes of the minutes. Is anyone in the audience or online planning to record or take pictures or anything? No? Pictures? Yep. Okay. So we have some people taking pictures of the adorable children who are in the audience again. So that we can get on to that, I'm going to just do one other item of business. Item 2, Approval of Minutes. So we have a few sets of minutes to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the Salary and Negotiations Subcommittee with participation of the full school committee held on January 5th, 2024.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
I'm going to abstain just because I wasn't there.
Okay.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes of the Salary and Negotiations Subcommittee with participation of the full school committee held on February 6th, 2024.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
I'll abstain again, I wasn't there.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the School Committee Meeting held on March 11th, 2024.
A second?
Second, sorry. I'm not used to seconding.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
I think this one, I wasn't there, so I'll abstain.
Okay.
And I will make a motion to approve the minutes of the School Committee Meeting held on March 20th, 2024.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
And finally, I will make a motion to approve the minutes of the School Committee Meeting held on March 25th, 2024.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
I'm abstaining because I wasn't there. Sorry. I just got excited.
All right. So we have four approves on all of those and one abstain. Okay. So Item 3, Schools Showcase. We have Foster Elementary School here tonight, and I will invite Matt Shifely, Principal of Foster, to come on up.
Good evening, everybody. This is one of my favorite moments of the school year right now. We had a wonderful talent show on Saturday, but right now, this is my moment. We have four engineers here with us who will be demonstrating some robots for you. But let's start with our Lego clubs. We had two Lego clubs this year. We had a kindergarten to grade three club that met every Monday. We ended sometime end of February, and we also had our robotics program for grades four and five. And, uh-oh. It's... There we go. There we go. So we, basically with the robotics, we went with the first Lego League. We signed up, they sent us this wonderful kit. We had some incredible parents build us a competition board that we put this mat on, and then we presented our challenge. The kids got to see some videos of the challenge, and then we began... This board that's here before you right now is missing probably, what, seven or eight different tasks that they had to accomplish. We're going to demonstrate two tasks for you tonight. But this is a definite STEM project between both the K-3 program and the 4-5 program. Lots of experimentation, lots of coding, lots of design, problem solving and collaboration. I think those are probably the two biggest things that we learned was how to problem solve. As you can see, we started small with little tasks and learned the coding, and here we go with a little demonstration. That should be a video. No?
Click on the drive. Scary. Click on the drive. I'm sharing. Double-click on it? No? Click on the drive of the link? See if you can go to the link. No?
I'm so sorry. Here we go. So that is autonomous. So they code it, they send the information to the robot, and the robot then has to complete the task. So nobody's sitting there with a joystick, nobody's controlling it with their hands. It is pure programming. So that was that video. Then we had some challenges and some successes. Let's try a... I'm so sorry that the video's not...
There we go.
So let's hear from the kids.
There were many days where we felt really, really bad about how we could finish it. And on the day where you actually accomplished what you were trying to do, it smelled so current to me, and we just thought it was fun.
Do you remember what I said the first day?
That was going to be hard days, very hard days, and you were right.
Here's one of our very early-on first successes with programming. The children were learning how to make it go a certain distance, complete a task, and bring a brick back to the starting point. And this was really early on, huh? Yeah.
Make it look easy.
Yeah.
Ready? Can we get the last one? Come on. Oh, yeah. There it is. Touchdown.
Nice job.
It always went that way, right? And then we have some of our students talking about coding and what it was like to learn coding. I think this is Ruby.
The most frustrating thing for me is when some of us were giving different ideas. And sometimes we had to try all of them, and sometimes our plan wasn't working, so we had to redo it and redo it. And sometimes, this has happened with many other people, I think. They lose the code and then I have to redo it. But the code comes better and stronger back again because it's from the base of the code we've already had, and more ideas thrown onto it, like a pepperoni pizza.
Like a pepperoni pizza. I like that. Here's one of our almosts. We thought we had it, and it was almost a success. Very close.
I saw it. I saw it.
Very close. And we learned to problem solve.
I felt joy because we got to do a lot of stuff, but we didn't always get the right thing correct, and we kind of failed sometimes. But I tried to figure out how to do it.
We never failed, did we? Just learned from our mistakes. Here's another example of a success. As you can see, some of the equipment that's on the board, the tasks that the kids complete. I don't remember which one this is.
Give me the best shot.
So just to wrap it up with this, we've got some student recommendations as to whether they would tell a friend to do this program.
I would recommend Lego Robotics Club because it's really fun, you get to enjoy building robots with friends, and you also get to build a robot that can move around and solve problems.
What I liked about Lego Robotics was that you could learn how to code and build these Lego bricks and be able to move them around.
I would recommend it to some people because the coding is really hard, and if you don't have some background knowledge, it can be really frustrating, but if it's really fun.
I would recommend Lego Robotics to other kids because it really helps you work on building friendships and make you get better at working with other people. And it also teaches you to deal with success and...
I think those are very true words. I wish I could tell you there were days where we didn't have some tears, right? We had some tears, frustrations. I would say to you, the first time the robot did what we wanted it to one day, the room was alive. And one week later, we were back in there, and the next problem came, and they went home very frustrated. For our K-3 students, the program was very unique, and I have to give credit to all the parents that volunteered to come into Foster to make the Mondays happen. We had probably four or five parent volunteers every week rotating around, coming in and making this happen. And there was a theme to every week with our students. There was a Thanksgiving theme, there was a building a playground theme, there was, if I remember right, they had a wind sail competition, and all kinds of different themed projects that they got to test out with their designs over the roughly five or six months of the club. I shared with you all, you've got two copies of our weekly schedule as to what was done in the K-3 program. Please enjoy taking your time to look at it. I just asked that one copy come back to Foster, and you all can have the rest. A very, very, very big thank you to the PTO. The robotics program is something I really, really wanted to bring with me. I haven't had a robotics program since 2008, so to be able to start this up with the support of our PTO and our two parents who really helped organize it, Mrs. Miloshi and Ms. Skelfland, couldn't have done it without the two of them. Mr. Reiser and Nick Levinson were my two staff members. I was a little ambitious. I thought that I could take on one more thing, and there were weeks where Mondays, I couldn't get there. So Mr. Levinson joined us, and I know Mr. Reiser and Mr. Levinson are both very eager to continue this going into next year with the robots. And maybe, you know, next year, we can take a trip and go see what a competition looks like. But I'm more about what we're learning versus getting out there. But I think the one thing I want to be clear about the work that we do here is that this is designed for ages nine to 16. So we are at the very early stages of this, and I think when you think of that age span, you're talking quite a range of students and learning. So for us, this was quite an awesome experience for me to be able to get this going. Again, I had students that were at the right age that I could do this this year. And without any further of me jabbering, I will invite my friends to come up and introduce themselves, and they will give you a quick demonstration of their skills.
Hi, my name is Weston McDaniel. I'm in fifth grade, and thank you for letting us demonstrate this today.
Thank you.
My name is Eden Hearn, and I'm in fourth grade.
My name is Taron Menon, and I'm in fourth grade.
My name is Jack Gaffey, and I'm in fifth grade, and thank you for letting us demonstrate.
It's their show now.
You still have the pencil marks? Starting, we learned a lot about starting it in the right spot. One of the important lessons about starting it in the same spot, and I think that first demonstration where they were successful, they would change the programming, and then put it back down, and the changes didn't work. So they learned quickly consistency is very important. There it is.
Did they go compete?
We didn't go compete, no. No.
One more shot.
So thank you for having us tonight, and good luck with the rest of your meeting.
Thank you very much for coming in. That was amazing.
That was great.
I had a daughter who was in Lego Robotics, and she was in fourth and fifth grade. So very cool to see that again.
We love the videos and the hands-on demonstration, Mr. Shifely. That was great. We love the videos and the hands-on demonstration. So thank you very much, Mr. Shifely.
Thank you very much. You too. All right, we'll move over to Item 4, Questions and Comments. We set aside 15 minutes to take questions and comments for items that are not on tonight's agenda, and the practice is to take the questions during new business items. So if there's something on new business tonight, we will ask questions during that time. But if there's a question or comment that anyone has in the audience or online, if you could, raise your hand.
Is there an agenda?
Oh, yeah. There's one right here.
I just wanted to ask a question if it's something that's already...
What's it based on? And I can tell you it's on the agenda.
The addition of the new work to rule.
Oh, sure. All right, come on up. All right, so before you do, I'm going to read my statement. The Hingham High School encourages community engagement and welcomes questions and comments as agenda items are discussed at the meeting. In addition, we have set aside up to 15 minutes at the beginning of this meeting for comments or questions that fall under the purview of the school committee and are not already on tonight's agenda. If any guest wishes to speak, please raise your hand, state your name and address, and address your comments to the chairperson. Comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker and must relate to topics within the scope of responsibility of the school committee. As established by Massachusetts General Laws, the responsibility of the school committee are to, 1, select and evaluate the superintendent; 2, review and approve budgets for public education in the district; and 3, establish educational goals and policies for the schools in the district. Speakers are encouraged to present their remarks in a respectful manner and to consider the privacy and interest of others. The public comment period is not a time for debate or response to comments by the school committee. The school committee is not adopting or endorsing any of the comments made during the public comment period. In addition to this public comment period, the school committee practices to provide time for questions and comments from the public on new business items. So with all of that said, you want to join us up at the microphone?
Yes. I wasn't even sure what I'm going to ask.
Okay. Yeah. So just if you can come, state your name and address, and then, yeah.
My name is Allison Hall. 20 Highview Drive in Hingham. As you can see, I have a fifth grader at Foster. This is my 11th year at Foster. It's been tough over the years, and now I have a junior in high school. And I am extremely concerned with the new HEA's extension to their work to rule. And I'm just wondering how this is going to affect our juniors coming into this coming year. I just, I don't have words to express my disappointment, so I don't know. I just, I wasn't planning on staying here, I wasn't planning on speaking, as you can see, but I just, I'm extremely concerned about our juniors and how we're going to go forward with this. I'm very concerned, so.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate your comment. Is there anyone else in the audience? Nope, I don't see anybody else. Okay. All right, so we are going to move over to Item 5, Superintendent's Report. Dr. Gaddis?
Some things to report and some upcoming events and lots to celebrate as well from our students and staff. Like last school committee meeting, I just wanted to share an additional mental health resource with the community. As I said last time, many of us as individuals or members of our family have had to seek out mental health supports at some time in their lives. And so we want to make sure the community is aware of the supports that both the school, town, and others that are available in the community. The district is using CareSolus as one of those resources, started last year. There are two ways to connect with CareSolus. One is by calling a 1-800 number, 888-515-0595, or using the website caresolus.com/hinghamschools. And we've been sharing that information online and social media, as well as in newsletters. That team is available 24/7, every single day, in order to provide support, and also has support in multiple languages. When you call CareSolus, they start with a brief screening, they try to match you with a provider to meet your needs, they'll help you book your appointment, and then they'll also do follow-up. So we just want to share that resource as a resource for members of our school community. Some upcoming events. We are right after break on Thursday, April 25th, in the Hingham High School cafeteria from 6:00 to 8:00 will be the Visual Arts Showcase. We're grateful for all our artists and our visual arts teachers who will be supporting the kids in their artwork for that show. Our advanced high school students will also have their show on display that night as well. We have a Medco event coming up that's co-sponsored with Hingham Medco and the Hingham Unity Council, as well as with support from the Hingham Public Schools PTOs. On Saturday, May 4th, from 10:00 to 1:00, we'll be going out to Boston, and this is an extension of an event last year where Medco families came to Hingham and did a walking tour of the center of town. This will be an opportunity for Hingham families to go out with Hingham Medco-Boston families and do a tour of Nubian Square, as well as followed by a lunch afterwards. It's a great opportunity to get to see downtown Boston in that area of town. So there's a link to, we've been sharing the information, there's a link to sign up and to register for that. So that's on Saturday, May 4th, from 10:00 to 1:00. On Wednesday, May 8th, at 7:00, we'll also have John Stevens, author of Table Talk Math, which is a great tool for families to say, how do we... We often talk about reading at home and reading a lot to your children, but this is a way to bring math to the dinner table and beyond, right before bedtime, too, and all times of the day, to really just engage with math talk at home. The event is on May 8th at 7:00, and we've been sharing that information as well. The new elementary school building project continues to move forward. We've received the windows for Area B, which is exciting, and the masonry envelope to the building is ongoing. In Area A, the mechanical and electrical and plumbing continue, and the rooftop equipment was delivered and set in March, so things are moving along. There's a school building committee meeting tomorrow, of which we'll hear some more recent updates and the progress in the building towards moving forward, so. Some events and some things that we're really proud of from our students at Hingham High School. We had some students who competed in the Massachusetts Association of Math Olympian Contest. And if I repeat, you can say it twice because it's important to recognize the kids. Congratulations to Ryan Chang. He was named a finalist, marking the first time in 15 years that we had a high school student win that award. In addition, we had seven other students compete in the competition. The Hingham High School robotics team as well has some awards to be proud of. It won the Creativity Award at Worcester Polytech competition, as well as secured the Gracious Professionalism Award at the competition at Bridgewater State University. So we're really proud of them and proud also and grateful to the coaches who supported them. We also had some winners this Saturday at the Hingham High School, from Hingham High School at the State History Day. On Saturday, several of our Hingham High School students competed. We had 17 students who represented Hingham at the statewide competition. Topping off the honors was Junior Matt Cummings, who won second place in the individual website category for his project, "American Turning Point: The Battle of Saratoga." His achievement will land him a trip to Washington to compete in the national competition in June. We also had some other students get some awards on Saturday. Lily Dong received an honorable mention in the individual documentary, and Sergio Munoz Alborz and Herbert Seto received an honorable mention in the group performance category. So we're really proud of them. Our Hingham Middle School students, too, the Junior Coral Spectrum, earned a silver medal at MICA this past weekend. At MICA, the students perform repertoires and get some feedback from the judges, and also participate in workshops, so we're really proud of them as well. We received word today, and I think June is in the... We received word today, and I think June is in the audience. We just want to acknowledge June Gusterson for her winning the award, is the recipient of the Massachusetts Council for the Social Studies William Spratt Award for Excellence in Teaching Middle School Social Studies. Just learned that this morning. Each year, the state council recognizes both elementary, middle, and secondary teachers. And we're proud of Ms. Gusterson for the award, and she'll be honored sometime this spring. Lastly, after, right after April break, we'll have visitors from the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. They'll be doing a required district review. The review will consist of visits to classrooms, observations, focus groups, interviews on unsafe data collection. We've been sending out, we sent out last week, a link for a family interview stakeholder focus group that families can sign up for if they'd like to participate, give feedback. We'll receive a report sometime afterwards that will include strengths and challenges and give us feedback for, from their visit. And this is a process that districts throughout the state go through. I guess we haven't been through this process in the past, so we were chosen to make sure to go through that process. So lots to celebrate and events coming up, and busy timing here.
Excellent. All right, we'll move over to item six, communications. So again, back to Dr. Adams. Do you have anything?
Yeah.
Okay. Then we have student communications.
I was half my report, so.
Say it again.
It's gonna be a short one.
Say it again.
Sorry.
68 music students returned from their trip to Disney this morning, or very early, after their weekend of warm weather. New NHS juniors will enjoy their induction ceremony tomorrow, the 9th, which, which will also be the seniors' outgoing celebration. For this Friday, prospective students are preparing for the first in-school SAT through the new digital format. And 34 students and chaperones are getting ready for their trip to France this May of Friday.
Wonderful. Thank you. All right, anyone, 6.3, anyone on the committee, have anything?
Yeah, I would say that I've received a great deal of outreach on the topic that Ms. Hall had mentioned earlier.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, so unfinished business, item seven. We have one item, 7.1, to discuss first read of policies FF, naming new facilities. I know this is gonna sound familiar, but Ally had made some changes when we were here, so we thought we would kick it back to have it be a first read and then discuss, and we can vote on it at our next meeting.
Yeah. So this is policy FF about naming new facilities, and specifically in relation to schools, school-related property, structures, facilities, and buildings. And if you remember from last time, the, the words in red are where we changed it from our original policy, just to put in place that superintendent would develop procedures around naming. And last time, there was some question, just to be clear, that this was not about schools. There is a policy for larger buildings, but about school-related properties and facilities. So I did add some language in the first sentence, just to clarify that. And the first paragraph does talk about schools generally and what that process is, but then it goes into detail about school-related buildings and facilities. So if, if anyone has comments or is not totally clear, I can make changes while we're discussing it here, so we can vote on it tonight.
Does anybody have any questions?
Does that...
So...
Yeah, if it doesn't explain, we can change it.
No, I'm just trying to remember. So this is all encompassing of school or a portion of the school, or this is intended to not, the school's like separate.
This is school-related buildings and facilities. So we, it does talk about, originally it said naming of a school, so that's why we changed the first section. It talks about, in that paragraph, more generally, schools and related facilities. And then if you read below, it's specific to just the smaller portions that we have authority to, to have a policy on.
So the naming of the school itself...
Would not be part of it.
Would not be part of the policy, but really the only reason we're calling it out upfront is it's just saying it's an important matter that serves a lot of potential, which makes sense to me.
Yeah, no, there's a, there's a process that goes through the town on that.
Okay, that makes sense.
Any other questions? Okay, all right, so we'll put on the agenda for the next meeting to vote on that, that night. Okay, so over to new business, item 8.1, to discuss a memorandum of understanding between the Hingham Public Schools and the Hingham Police Department. This is a first read, so I will kick it back over to Ally.
Thank you. And Margaret, feel free to jump in. We did ask Chief Jones to join us tonight, but they were having a ceremony for some of the new officers, so congratulations to all the new officers. But we did talk in subcommittee with Chief Jones already, so he's been through this with us, and the subcommittee's been through it. There were no changes on our end from the MOU from last year. And if you remember, last year, we did incorporate some language about the body cameras, as well as combined with the, the policy or the MOU related to the Comfort Dock. So that is all now in one MOU. And in the subcommittee, we also did review it in light of some of the things that were happening in the fall, just to make sure that we felt like after the report was given to us about hiring procedures, that this also encompass everything that had been discussed. And we did feel it, it still was relevant.
Any questions, comments? This is a first read, so we'll be able to digest it and discuss it next time as well, too.
Just on that last point you made.
Yes.
So there's no changes, but you reviewed it with the con, sort of different context than last year, and felt like it was actually in here.
We did, and we walked through it with Chief Jones, looking at it from that perspective as well, just to make sure that everything was covered off on.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so we'll put that on the next, well, next school committee is town meeting, so agenda right after that. All right, 8.2, to discuss an athletic waiver and act as appropriate. I'm not sure who's taking this one.
Sherri, is Jim online?
I can just have the athletic read of either for the baseball, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, he's not on.
I'll share what I know. So there, this is for a waiver for freshman baseball. I guess the freshman, the junior class is very small, the involvement of baseball students, of students in baseball. So after placing the students in varsity, then placing the students in JV, there are six to eight, six, exactly, six freshmen who now want to play baseball. In order to field a team, we need additional students. And so the request is to add eighth graders to that team to allow for a freshman team. This is a waiver that feels that it's just a couple of years. It's not a long, we don't expect this, I know this is a new waiver, and they haven't seen in the past. It's expected that'll be short-term for just two or three years as they build up the program. Again, I think this is likely one of those victims of COVID, where less kids were playing and less kids were interested. And so I think after two or three years, they would expect that this would not be the case. And again, the key factor was the fewer numbers in the junior class who are participating in baseball. So, so the request is to approve a waiver for the spring for eighth graders to participate in freshman baseball.
Any questions, comments? No? Okay. Somebody want to make a motion?
I will make a motion to grant the waiver to allow eighth graders to play in freshman baseball.
I will second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Okay, so it's passed. All right, so 8.3, to approve grants and donations and act as appropriate. And we don't have anything, right?
Yeah.
Oh yes, we have the grant. Yes, we have that one.
We have three.
Two, yeah. Oh, three, I didn't see two. Okay, sorry.
One of them is, I'm not sure which order they're in, but one of them is a Medco Supplemental Special Education Grant of a total of $11,484. The grants are each district, Medco district can apply for the grant. The purpose of the grant is to support and reimburse special education costs that are, there's a certain threshold, that are not covered by either federal or state-restricted sources. So thanks to Dr. Cataldo and Ms. Jackson, we applied and were awarded an amount to help us support current special education costs. So the, the amount will be used to supplement current special education programming for Medco students.
I will make a motion to accept the fiscal year '24 FC 318 Medco Supplemental Special Education Grant for a total of $11,484.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No. Thank you for doing that, Dr. Cataldo and Ms. Jackson.
The Hing, Hingham High School PTO has supported 12 mini-grants at Hingham High School this year, and you have a list of equipment and other resources that they're supporting. Just some examples, for example, our support for a field trip for a yoga studio in Boston for a physical education class, language novels for Latin classes, so students can have books to actually use and read in Latin, brush painting workshop for students in Chinese, some kits you'll see there for some science, some studio cameras for TV production classes as well.
Yeah, that's great. All right, any questions?
I will make a motion to accept the Hingham High School PTO mini-grant, the 12 mini-grant
Awards.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No. Okay, those are...
Michelle's gotta come back. The second meeting's really thrown off today.
One more.
One more.
One more. The WSM Projects, Hingham Properties LLC is actually Derby Street Shops. They had an event over February vacation, and any proceeds from the event contributed to Hingham Schools. So we got a check for $108.
Wow, that's great. Yeah, nice.
Just to get your approval on that before we accept that donation.
Any, what, what are we earmarking it for, or do you have an intention, intent?
For now, we're just like, just accepting the donation. I think it'll probably be anything miscellaneous that comes up as well that we would probably use it for.
Okay, thank you.
I will make a motion to accept $108 in donations from the WSM Hingham Properties LLC, also known as Derby Street Shops.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, aye? Any opposed? No. Okay, thank you. All right, so moving over to 8.4, we don't have any surplus items to discuss this week. Oh, we do.
Yes.
Yeah, I must not have downloaded, sorry.
It came up very late.
Okay, no, okay. I didn't, yeah, I downloaded it early this morning, so sorry about that.
No, that's okay.
Okay, so I'll have you explain.
So in terms of, so what we've started looking at, just to give you a quick update as well, we've started work on the preparation for the building of the dock. The OPM, as you know, has been hired. You approved this as well. The designer has been hired, and you approved that as well, too. We've got the contracts back for those. What we're working on right now is trying to figure out a plan for storage. And also, we're working on empty in the building. For any items that may be surplus items, we will either, there's an auction that the town runs for surplus items. We can tag them and put them up for auction or try to dispose of those items at the least cost available. So this list of surplus items, just a couple, some of those items have been stored, have been stored in that facility for a while. They have not been used. Some of them are older items, some of them are not functioning. So just want to, this is like our first list. I'm sure you'll be seeing a lot more as we continue to go through the building.
All right. I make a motion to declare surplus items in the athletic shed or building to the back of the high school listed, and to authorize the executive director of Business and Support Services to dispose of them at the least cost to Hingham.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Yeah, okay, thank you. All right, so that's item eight. So item nine, Subcommittee and Project Reports. Matt?
Yeah, real quick, the next HEF meeting is tomorrow night, and our special education subcommittee, we are trying to get a date on the books. It's looking like it's gonna be early May at this point. And the agenda, main agenda item there would be kind of do a deeper dive on the report that Dr. Cataldo shared last time, or two times ago at the school committee meeting.
Great.
Tough, because March is six weeks long and April's only two weeks. Yeah. I thought we were, I thought we had a date, and then CPAC came with their latest, and I don't know. So maybe back to the drawing board, we'll see.
All right, Ally?
We had a Plymouth River School Council meeting on the 26th of March, which feels like forever ago. And then for Hingham Arts there is a board meeting on Thursday night, which is 11th, and we have a policy meeting scheduled, or rescheduled, for the 23rd of April.
Tim?
Awesome. The Educational Programming Subcommittee has not met, will probably not meet until May, probably middle of May, I think we're aiming for the next meeting. The SNAP has, last Wednesday, had the Pizza Palooza, which was a wonderful event. Good time had by all, lots of pizza. Thursday, May 2nd, is a bigger, really exciting event. It's the 10th anniversary cocktail party over at the Bath. So get your tickets for that.
Thanks.
Get them on the SNAP website or on Facebook.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Carrie, I suspect yours will be a little bit longer.
Yeah, it's not, it's different. So Salary and Negotiations has been meeting, we've had a number of meetings. So we had one scheduled for tomorrow with Unit A, the teachers. At the end of last week, we petitioned the Department of Labor Relations, because we believe we're in pass, and the union did sign on with us for that. And they assigned a mediator to that. So the session on Wednesday will be mediation. It's the same mediator that we've been working with, with the paraprofessionals. And it's been posted as for the full school committee. If anyone wants to come, you don't have to, but you can. And so we're meeting, that's the 10th. We also have Unit D on Thursday, and several other meetings scheduled for that, for Unit D and Unit B as well.
Great. And then no other Subcommittee reports, right?
No, that's it.
Jacqueline, I don't know if you wanted to come up and speak to that? No? Okay, okay. All right, I only have one update. There was a Foster School Council meeting on April 4th. All right, so that's Subcommittee Reports. And any other items under 48 hours? No? Okay. Before we go to the last item, I just wanted to remind people, we've got, the next school committee meeting is at town, is our town meeting, which is Wednesday this year, April 24th, starts at 6:30. And then our next regularly scheduled school committee meeting is Monday, April 29th, at 6:30. So we will be adjourning to executive session and not to return to open session.
I will make a motion to adjourn to executive session, not to return to open session pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30, 30A, Section 21A3, for the purposes of, to approve the minutes of the Salary and Negotiations Subcommittee with participation of the full school committee executive session, held on January 5th, 2024, as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the chair so declares.
And so declare.
To approve minutes of the Salary and Negotiations Subcommittee with participation of the full school committee executive session, held on February 6th, 2024, as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the chair so declares.
And so declare.
To approve minutes from the executive session, held on March 25th, 2024, as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the chair so declares.
And so declare.
To provide an update on negotiations with HEA units B, A, B, and D, as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the chair so declares.
And so declare.
To hear agreements from HEA unit C and act as appropriate, as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the chair so declares.
And so declare.
And to discuss Wage Act violations and act as appropriate, as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the chair so declares.
And so declare. Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, great. All those in favor, Matt?
Aye.
Ally?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. We're adjourned.